The struggle for community. Jordan on TV will present stories from his award-winning thesis on civic actors in Trenton, New Jersey who opposed urban renewal. Jordan's research chronicles a turbulent time locally and nationally during the 1950s and 60s, using documented experiences of ordinary residents and business owners. This talk will highlight the interconnectedness of a so-called divided community and its protest of social engineering. Projects discussed during this presentation will include Route 29, John Fitch Way, and Coldport. Mr. On TV's thesis on this topic won the Paul A. Stellhorn New Jersey History Award, the C.O. Jolene Prize in American History, and the Dean Hank Dobin Prize in Community-Based Scholarship on this evening of June 24, 2021 at 6:34 PM.
Thank you. I believe the floor is yours, Mr. On TV.
Thank you.
Michael, say anything first, or?
Oh, yeah, I would just, I just wanted to say, very quickly, I had the pleasure of seeing a version of this presentation about a year ago, and I've been very eager for Ms., for Jo- Jordan to present to the board ever since then. Jordan's research is really pertinent, not just to the history of Trenton, but to where we are, stand now as a city. Over and over and over again in our work, I see things that are coming up as a city with where we are that connects to the research that Jordan did. And this is our living history. This is where we are today as a city, not just where we came from in the past. And I think a lot of this connects to where we are going in the city, the things that we'd like to achieve as a city. Both, I think, we really need to understand this history in order to understand where, how we got here, and we're, and really where we are going as a city. So I'm eager to present Jordan Tope to the planning board and his research. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for that introduction, Michael. And thank you to all of the members of the Trenton Planning Board this evening for granting me an audience. It is, of course, a great honor and a privilege to address this body and to have the opportunity to present on a subject that is not only Trenton history, but American history. So let me just try to share my screen here. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes, Jordan.
Okay, great. So as Michael said, this is a topic that actually originally I came from my college thesis. And of course, it's difficult to present an entire thesis in about 60 minutes or so. But my goal is to try to share three excerpts or stories about people that I studied and researched. And I would hope that this could be an opportunity to learn from each other and to have a dialogue. So after each segment of my presentation, I will include some time for questions. But before we jump into stories, I wanted to just first center with a little bit of context right here in central New Jersey. So for most of its history, Trenton, the city of Trenton was Mercer County's largest municipality, and many of the other local towns were mostly rural farming areas. But during the last 60 years or so, the Mercer County area has grown tremendously. The suburbs, the highways, the post-war academic boom, all of these elements were a part of that story, but they were only part of a larger change, which is what I wrote about, called urban renewal. So to start, we'll go back to the year 1954, at the height of the Cold War, and the United States feared a nuclear attack on its cities, much like this photo showing the center of Hiroshima, Japan. And so urban areas with large, dense population centers were considered defense liabilities. And so an effort was made to change the settlement patterns in this country. And with bipartisan support, President Eisenhower and the U.S. Congress enacted laws to reorder the built environment and disperse the civilian populations from the urban, urban centers. And of course, Mercer County, New Jersey, was no exception to this trend. Between the 1950s and the 1970s, there was new infrastructure that rose across the region, and much of it was federally financed. In the downtown area of Trenton rose state government buildings, including offices and the cultural complex. And across the region, there were highways and byways that circled and crisscrossed the city. There were state highways like Route 29, and there were interstate highways and bridges like I-95 and the Scudders Falls Bridge. Mercer County even received $600,000 in federal funds to build Mercer County Park, which helped launch the county park system. But in Trenton, New Jersey's capital city, urban renewal also produced this asphalt and weed-strewn expanse, which was once part of the neighborhood of South Trenton. And South Trenton was a working-class enclave of African-Americans and Eastern European Jews. The city and state governments demolished it for highways, apartments, government buildings, and failed malls called John Fitch Way. During the 1950s, many elected leaders said that this project represented Trenton's civic rebirth. But then 30 years later, many now said that urban renewal was an eyesore and a symbol of ill-fated social planning. Now purportedly, this program existed to save the state capitol from a nuclear apocalypse, and yet it seemed to create the very destruction that its proponents claimed that it would help prevent. After $45 million, demolishing 165 acres in South Trenton, Coldport, and other areas, the city had little to show for its efforts, except the empty land, lost radibles, and highways. And then there were many other problems, like middle-class flight, lost business, lost green space, lost homeownership, and underfunded, underperforming schools. But the story in Trenton was not just unique to one city. Across the country, there were politicians and planners who reordered the built environment over many citizen objections. There were demolitions that displaced businesses and people and fomented racial and class conflicts. And in fact, there was a famous social scientist and commentator at the time named William White, who developed a term for this practice. He called it "social engineering" and defined the term as "the planned manipulation of the individual." And he argued that this concept was profoundly authoritarian in its implications, for it subordinates the individual to the group. Now, in Trenton, the pressures to conform were strong, but Trentonians did not accept the destruction of their community passively, and they were very persistent. They wrote letters, they litigated lawsuits, they organized, and they protested. And as urban renewal tore at the built environment and the institutions supporting civic life, it literally divided communities. This movement also coincided with the 1960s, which is a time that is often remembered nowadays as divided. But this was also a shared experience that bridged those same racial, class, and ethnic divides that were growing at the time. And today, I believe that story can help provide a platform for community conversation and revitalization. So to illustrate that past, I will try to share three stories, and they follow no particular order, except chronological, between the period of 1950 and 1970. So to first, I would like to begin with something important to any community, and that is the home. Homeownership was near and dear to this person, Carolyn Davenport Moore, who was a former executive secretary of the NAACP and was the owner of Trenton's only non-white real estate company. At the age of 20, she joined the Philadelphia branch of the NAACP, seeking legal aid for a black man accused of murder. In Philly, she fought for equal rights in employment, housing, criminal justice, and public accommodation, and helped organize the 1944 Transit Workers' Strike. And all of these experience, experiences particularly sensitized her to the issue of housing discrimination, of which fighting became a passion of hers. In 1946, Carolyn and her husband Clifford Moore moved to the city of Trenton so Cliff could pursue a clerkship with the federal judge Philip Foreman. Both, both of the Moores were movers and shakers in the African-American community. Cliff was a lawyer, and he served with Thurgood Marshall on the NAACP's legal defense team for the Trenton Six, which is a famous civil rights case. And in 1952, President Eisenhower also appointed him as the court's first black United States commissioner since the Reconstruction era. Moore herself was also a trailblazing entrepreneur, and she founded the, the first woman-owned real estate business in Trenton, which she called Richip Realty Company, and named for her two sons Ricky and Chip. She began the company in her living room at home as a hobby, but it soon became her livelihood when her husband passed away tragically and unexpectedly in the late 50s. So working hard, she developed a niche of her own, selling to black, middle-class buyers in central New Jersey. But besides selling houses, Moore also used her business to advocate civil rights. And in Trenton, she focused on fighting Coldport, which was Trenton's first urban renewal project. The neighborhood of Coldport was a racially mixed area at the center of Trenton, right about where the triangle on this map is. And the city proposed to demolish it for an 18-acre industrial park. This project, the newspapers reported, would help the city-industry compete with the new U.S. Steel Plant in Bucks County, Pennsylvania. But the project, however, would leave low-income black homeowners no choice but to enter public housing or an openly discriminatory real estate market. So Moore's opposition to this project would highlight urban renewal's greatest flaw, the destruction of owner-occupied houses. And while black membership in Trenton's civic organizations was reported to be very restricted, black homeownership was said to be disproportionately large. In the year 1950, for example, 49% of Trenton's black occupied homes were owner-occupied. And remarkably, this statistic was about 1.5 times higher than the national average. So although Coldport's housing was then considered to be the worst in Trenton, it did allow families to buy property, to build wealth, and to participate as community taxpayers. So in an op-ed to the newspaper, Moore wrote that surely this city does not want this minority group restricted largely to low-cost rental housing and government-financed housing at that. Where is the pride that goes with living in a city with the fine old traditions that this city's old population boasts so loudly of? So Moore, using her business, worked with residents and the NAACP to argue for open housing, secure home financing, and organized relocation. But instead of acknowledging these demands, the leaders in Trenton at the time brushed them off. So for instance, the mayor, Donald Connolly, suggested that displaced homeowners move into public housing, since, quote, "no private builders have shown any interest in low-rent housing." And then there were other leaders, like the businessman John P. Waldridge, who formerly chaired Trenton's Planning Board, and argued that the total value of the project so outweighs individual hardships, it must be advanced. So with no organized relocation plans, 242 black families were evicted from their houses without much legal recourse, and the chaotic demolitions only declined city homeownership and encouraged blockbusting in the private real estate sector. There were cramming of families into adjacent neighborhoods like North Trenton, which is pictured at the left here. And this movement only grew social tensions, and eventually it would displace many middle-class residents, including Moore herself, to the suburbs. And all the while, families lost their houses, the promise of industrial development never materialized, and the land for the Coldport project sat vacant for years as a weed-infested lot. So Moore herself would continue her housing advocacy until she retired in the early 70s. But she would say, of the state of affairs, that "the evils of segregated housing, which have multiplied under government auspices since 1934, is bigotry which our nation cannot afford. It is a petty vicious system which discriminates against a group of people in providing homes for them, then condemns them for living in overcrowded, rundown shacks where they pay enough rent to own good homes, and at the same time attempts to prove to the world that it is trying to clean up the slums." So that concludes the first part of my presentation, and this could be an opportunity for questions, or I can continue on to the next segment of my presentation.
Would any board members like to ask a question at this stage? See, there's a comment from Aldrinon Ward in the chat. "The role of deindustrialization of the eastern Rust Belt affected Trenton in the same way it did all northeastern cities. Urban renewal accelerated this process." Any questions from the board, comments? Thank you for sharing that story with us. I hope you'll continue on to the second portion.
Okay. You got it. So for the next story, I would like to highlight something which many of us cherish, but especially now during this pandemic, and that is the park. And so the next person I wanted to talk about is Ferdinand W. Roebling III, who valued open space very much and was a lifelong outdoorsman and conservationist. He was known among friends as Fird, and he was also heir to the famous company of bridge building fame, and one of the city's last great titans of industry. So Fird Roebling grew up on West State Street, front and center to what his family called "the great tradition of civic capitalism." His grandfather, Ferdinand Roebling I, who is holding young Fird as a child at the center of this picture on his lap, was the most civically active of the Roebling family of the three original Roebling brothers. And this was a legacy that he would pass on to Fird's parents and then to Fird himself. Ferdinand Roebling I was president of Trenton's Library Commission, and he also chaired the fundraising and building drives for both the city's public library and the city hall during the 1900s. Fird's mother, Ruthie Roebling, was also a beloved civic leader and philanthropist from the 1920s until her death in 1960. And in later years, she was known as Trenton's Grand Dame. Mrs. Roebling endowed local hospitals and churches, and she fundraised for the annual children's fund. She also helped donate Hamilton Township's John A. Roebling Park, and she continued a public land lease that she had inherited in Trenton's Stacy Park. So no civic project symbolized the great tradition more than Mallon Stacy Park, with its expansive 45 acres behind the state house that had served everyone from legislators to neighborhood children. And between 1911 and 1920, the city, the state, and the private citizens of Trenton developed this park in partnership. And to spare you all the details, it was an epic story with epic characters like Governor Woodrow Wilson and city industrialists who gave or leased parklands, and factory workers who helped name the park through a Chamber of Commerce contest. So growing up, Fird developed a passion, with all of this happening, he developed a passion for Trenton that was unique to his generation. And Stacy Park was a part of that. While other relatives of his disengaged from the great tradition, he worked to preserve it. He, for instance, remained involved with city philanthropic causes and in the night, during the 1950s, served on the War Memorial Commission, YMCA Board, and was president of the Delaware Valley United Fund, which was the local community chest. In 1952, he also alone opposed his family's decision to sell their wire rope business, and he said it betrayed his ancestors, the company's values, and its 5,200 employees. Even after his brother and his cousin left the company, Fird continued working there as the last family employee. So it was natural for Roebling to also defend Stacy Park, which the government sought to demolish for the Route 29 highway. And during the 1950s, there were officials who had already destroyed part of the park when the Old Water Power Canal was filled and paved through West Trenton. In the year 1953, the city commissioners had voted four to one to deaccession this parkland and donated as roadbed to the state highway department. There were dozens, actually hundreds, of middle-class residents, realtors, and civic groups, including the Cadwalader-Adderbury Civic Association, the West End Civic Association, the West End Republican Club, the Trenton Optimists, the Civitan Club, the Trent Naturalist Club, and the Junior High School Number Three PTA, that all went on record against this decision and said that Route 29 would destroy precious green space, lower property values, and generate pollution and unsafe traffic. It was also reported that the final vote left many residents questioning whether democracy had been carried out when expressed opinions were so overwhelmingly against the highway. There were other residents, though, who continued a campaign to the state house. And in 1955, a West Trenton citizen delegation met with the state highway commissioner at the time, Dwight Palmer. They regi-, they formally registered their concerns and the community's concerns about Route 29. During the meeting, the delegates reportedly inquired what the highway would do to Stacy Park, and Palmer's response was emphatic. He said that the park would have much more appeal from the standpoint of beauty with a highway running through it than not. And contrary to the public sentiment, Palmer said that the old canal was a dumping ground, not a pleasure ground. "We do not fly in the face of decency and cultural considerations," he told the group. And I guess that was that. So when the highway finally opened in 1957, state officials planned for it to extend south to provide car access to the new Capitol complex. They sought to condemn the rest of Stacy Park, reportedly, I might add, the cheapest right-of-way available, in a complex land swap that included the parcels that Roebling's family had leased. So in 1964, New Jersey's Attorney General filed a friendly, quote-unquote, condemnation suit against the city of Trenton, as well as Fird Roebling and 34 other heirs whose families helped donate parklands to the city. Now reportedly, city and state officials had already entered negotiations when, before an agreement could be reached, the state representatives entered Stacy Park without permission and began construction on the highway. So Fird Roebling litigated this lawsuit in Superior Court, and he was the only defendant to swear and subscribe his own affidavit. And in it, he personally appealed to the court to order the government to compensate the heirs for this loss of land. He had said that his mother and other civic capitalists, including the Hamel, Stokes, Oliphant, and Green families, gave Stacy Park for the benefit of the city and themselves. But now the city and the state were subverting those gifts to purchase lands for private development and not public recreation. And this, he said, "misused green space and abused the public trust." So although Roebling's litigation did not halt the construction, it did slow the process, and it pressured government officials to settle. And to convince the old families to relinquish their claims, the state offered them $150,000 in compensation to be split between themselves. In addition, the mayor at the time, Arthur Holland, pledged that the city's $500,000 balance of funds would go into escrow for park purposes. He said that the promise to the heirs was non-binding, but it stood as a moral commitment to guarantee the city's conduct. However, the city council, which then held budgetary powers, instead voted to use that $500,000 to close the city's 1965 deficit. This was a result of lost taxable properties in the John Fitch Way area. So there were, there were working-class residents in South Trenton, many of them who worked in Roebling factories that continued to oppose the highway, but the writing was on the wall. And in the park's place rose a divided 34-foot-tall six-lane freeway behind the state house. And reportedly, the $7.4 million road had been designed and constructed close to the riverfront to provide as much parking space as possible for state office buildings. The, there were many commentaries in the newspaper about this, but the New York's, Newark Star-Ledgers correspondent called this scene "an ugly black-and-white fence", and residents continued to lament the lost golden opportunity to have a beautiful riverfront park. So in 1965, the same year, Roebling, Fird Roebling quietly resigned from his job at CFNI Roebling, and he retired from his civic positions and never spoke publicly about his life in Trenton again. Now, for someone who had once been so involved with this city... His silence spoke volumes. He had defended the great tradition against this urban renewal. Only to be misled, betrayed, and defeated by the officials that were entrusted to protect Stacy Park. Roebling had litigated and received compensation for this demolished land. But that seems to have mattered less to him than the ethical principle behind it. He had grown up in a time and a place when civic capitalism was considered to be a family relationship and a loyalty second to none. But in this case, the government had broken that trust and detached. The benevolent civic leadership from the city once and for all. So that concludes the second part of my presentation. And again. This could be an opportunity for questions, or I can continue to the next segment.
Well, the more things change, the more they say the same. So the DOT or Highway Commissioner promised that the park would be, you know, an asset. It's just. Mind boggling. So I, I wanted to ask, you know, you mentioned that the, the commissioners voted four to one. Did the ones opposed the project say anything? Was there any statement from them about why they were opposing this project in the beginning?
I'm not sure it had anything to do with the park. I think it might have been more, I, I can double check this, but. I think their reasoning had more to do with. Technical reasons like. Finalizing the engineering drawings or something like that. But I, I, I can double check that and get that information to you.
That'd be great. Do others have questions or comments at this point? I mean, I would just note that it's also interesting that the heirs received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? So which is probably a lot of money in today's terms. But really what happened there is wealthy white people got paid and the community of Trenton got stuck with the highway that separated us from the river. So I see Michael Culver's hand.
Yeah, just quickly to mention, I know this is really the first part of the. Of the Route twenty-nine development, which actually occurred in three different parts. And my understanding from talking to Jordan is that. This, you know, this process of objection and overruling the community happened in all three parts of the Route twenty-nine development. So this is the first one. But there were two more phases after this that were the same process or was repeated. So this is very much central to where we are.
Government doesn't change.
Yeah. I saw a comment from someone in the chat that also noted. That there's this other resource on designing the red line and designing the Wii. Which was April De Simone, and there's an exhibit at the Conservatory on East State Street. The exhibit showed the entire redlining, redlining zone districts throughout the city of Trenton and the migration of the black community contained in other parts of cities. So that sounds like a good thing to check out within. Our community, very apropos. Any other comments or questions on this section? Just one clarifying question, are the slides going to be available for us in PDF format or some other way after this is over?
I, I, I would be happy to discuss that more with you afterwards, sure.
Great.
We, we could make arrangements.
Yeah, let's, let's move on to the third section.
Okay, so for the final story. I wanted, I would like to discuss something that many people consider to be formative in their lives, and that is high school. Well, a quality education mattered very much to the students at Trenton Central High School. And if you were a Trenton High student in the early nineteen sixties. You attended one of New Jersey's, New Jersey's largest and most prestigious public high schools. When it opened in nineteen thirty-two. The building on Chambers Street was considered to be the largest of its kind in America. By nineteen sixty-four, it was also New Jersey's second largest public high school. And one of its most diverse in terms of student enrollment. Under one roof, there were some thirty-three hundred Mercer County students. From the stoops of Chambersburg and East Trenton. To the yards of Hiltonia and the farms of Lawrenceville, who studied in four academic departments. The school was built with Roebling steel and Lennox tile, and it graduated leaders in business, politics, the professions. Sports and the visual and performing arts. But Trenton High was also a school of intense contradictions and flaws. Some years later, there was a study that described its social environment as desegregated, but not truly integrated. And in nineteen sixty-four, its principal admitted that about half his students lacked basic reading skills. While some read and wrote well enough to win admission and scholarships to such competitive colleges as Princeton and Vassar. So the longtime disparities at the school were separate and unequal. And they stoked strong sectarian rivalries. Now urban renewal would explode those tensions by declining the tax revenues. That Trenton High needed to function as a quality school for all children. In the year nineteen sixty-three. There were reports that surfaced that the city and state governments had demolished eight million dollars in ratables. Tax ratables for the Coleport and John Fitchway projects. And the following March, Mayor Arthur Holland testified before the New Jersey State Legislature. That his city needed urgent financial assistance. The loss of ratables due to the state building program, he said. Is being made more serious by the acquisition by the state of additional lands within our city for highway purposes. At the same time, city tax revenues have been materially reduced due to tax assessments of office buildings. Vacated by the state in its moves to the newly constructed office buildings. So to accommodate these reductions. The city council in Trenton, which budgeted, then budgeted school finances. Resorted to annual austerity tactics. And the council's cuts reportedly treated education as a quote. Soft or luxury item which can be cut from the city budget without great harm. So by nineteen sixty-four, council was cutting three hundred thousand dollars from the seven point five million dollar school budget. That year dwindling monies for teacher salaries, textbooks, and supplies. Ranked the Trenton Public Schools among New Jersey's lowest school districts in per people expenditures. And this, it should be added, was in a state that was said to then rank annually between fortieth, forty-eighth and fiftieth. Among states in financial support of education. In January nineteen sixty-five. The superintendent of schools, Dr. Richard T. Beck. Even testified before the U.S. House Committee on Education. And he said that his district was struggling for its very existence. I'm very concerned, he later said. The city has about reached its limit in the degree to which it can support education through the property tax. Unless the state legislature does something, I don't think our educational system is going to survive. In May of nineteen sixty-four. The district's problems worsened when Lawrence Township, which was the last suburb to send its children to Trenton High. Voted to build a new senior high school outside the city. And the township's phased withdrawal of students and tuition money between fall nineteen sixty-five and spring nineteen sixty-seven. Lost the city more than two hundred thousand dollars in annual revenues. And one-sixth of the entire high school's student population. And it cannot be overstated how enormous this change was. In just four years, for example. The school's racial demographics shifted from thirty-one percent black and sixty-nine percent white. In fall nineteen sixty-three to fifty-five percent black and forty-five percent white in fall nineteen sixty-seven. And an, a report at the time also said. That the economic background of the students has also changed. In increasing numbers, even the moderately affluent have moved to the suburbs. And their children naturally attend township schools, including many children who formerly attended Trenton Central High School on a contract basis. So by fall nineteen sixty-seven. The district's funding crisis exploded when another round of cuts increased its deficit to one point three million dollars. These reductions included repairs to the high schools reportedly dismal paint and plastering. Which had been deferred since the year nineteen fifty-five. Superintendent Beck, who resigned shortly after, called the council's cuts ridiculous and impossible. He also said that they show that city council just doesn't understand the budget. During the annual budget meeting, it was reported that the city council president, Peter Raddis. Quote, spent most of his time reading newspapers and seemed to be unconcerned about the whole thing. Meanwhile, the councilman Henry Murphy and Martin Hillman trivialized teacher hiring cuts. And told newspapers that the dust will settle. We will have to settle for larger classes, Murphy said, because council doesn't think we can afford it. By fall of nineteen sixty-seven, it was reported that ten to fifteen percent of Trenton High students, many of them African-American. Have been educated to the point of frustration. They had tired of an underfunded system with adult leaders that were indifferent to their feelings and needs. At the same time, the working class white and black students who remained. Found themselves competing for dwindling resources. And budget shortages only compounded their old rivalries once the middle-class families up and left. The simmering anger in the school finally exploded. When in December nineteen sixty-seven, there was a fight between students that injured twenty-five people. And resulted in six arrests. There were fights that disrupted classes again later in the month, and then in February nineteen sixty-eight. The mayor at the time, Carmen Armenti attributed what he called the disorders, or what the students called the protests. To frustration against school policies which had been building up for some time. The newspapers reported that quote, Negro students said the violence was not a racial problem between students. But rather that Negroes feel they are getting discourteous treatment from the disciplinarians. And one student commented to the newspaper that the punishment is always worse for us. These events reached a climax in April nineteen sixty-eight. When the civil rights leader, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Was assassinated. The year's violence and disruptions only hastened Trenton High's white flight. And by nineteen seventy, it was reported that seventy percent of the city's school enrollment was low income and non-white. In July of nineteen sixty-eight, Superintendent Beck remarked publicly. That education is a state function that the state of New Jersey does not exercise. As a result, New Jersey has the least equal education in the nation. Comparatively, Mississippi and Alabama support some of their Negro schools better than we, New Jersey, support our city schools. Dr. Beck had endorsed the recent findings of President Johnson's National Advisory Commission on Civil Disorders. Or the Kerner Commission, which had attributed unrest in the cities to what it called white racism. What white Americans have never fully understood, but what the Negro cannot forget, the commission wrote. Is that white society is deeply implicated in the ghetto. White institutions created it, white institutions maintain it, and white society condones it. And in referencing the statement, Dr. Beck seemed to recognize. That the high school's unrest was not produced by accident, but by design. The city of Trenton had defunded its own school system with years of urban renewal. Which segregated and evaporated the local tax base. And in conclusion, Beck said, I disagree with the critics of the report. I think that twenty-five years from now, people will sit around and say, well, I guess they put their finger on the problem. So here we are fifty-plus years later. And urban renewal's legacy still persists, and it's not just underfunded schools. Limited green space, low homeownership, residential segregation, high taxes. All of these issues remain living issues in Trenton, Newark, New Jersey, Detroit, Michigan. New Haven, Connecticut, and other places where documented renewal programs once existed. Then and now, social, political, and economic conflicts tear at the heart of communities. And test our democratic limits. But at the same time, extraordinary challenges like these also unite people in extraordinary ways. And today, I sampled from three stories of ordinary but different citizens. Whose lived experiences of urban renewal and social engineering. Transcended race, ethnicity, gender, age, and class. They did not work together, but each maintained a parallel sense of place and of civic purpose. They shared a passion for preserving a community and its way of life. And that was both typical and exceptional. Being civic-minded was perhaps common then. But these Trentonians chose to, chose to publicly defend their principles. And they tried influencing the government policy. And together, stories like these highlight the importance of civic discourse to our society. Despite having perhaps seemingly irreconcilable differences. Ordinary residents, business owners, and others can find common ground. And use dialogue to engage in the complex system of government. Citizen participation is a key pillar to any democracy. And the civic actors here exercise that right. Carolyn Moore wrote letters and she spoke at meetings. Fird Roebling, he litigated a lawsuit, and the high school students marched in highways and streets. They each voiced perspectives to protect and improve their community's needs and values. They had a vested interest in the city and each put forth an effort to improve it. Now, as a discipline that is rooted in studying the past. History highlights Trenton's struggle for community. And it shows that despite all the frustrations, in hindsight, the citizens were right. It doesn't pretend that Trenton's actors won. But it does correct the record to show that they achieved more parity. As the first of many to object and share their concerns. And even if ignored then, analyses like Carolyn Moore's argument for homeownership. Or Fird Roebling's support for parks, or the students advocacy for school funding. Each helped set the record straight. And indeed, after twenty-four years, urban renewal did end in the city of Trenton, as it did elsewhere. Based on many critiques like what I've described today. So Trenton's own struggle against social engineering achieved mixed results at best. But it did not necessarily prove that civic participation fails. Instead, each of these stories show that people are not passive. And they do care about where they live and work despite being ignored by leaders elected or appointed to serve them. And in hindsight, their critiques illustrate how humans relate to the built environment. Engage with civil society and strive to uphold democratic ideals and institutions that make communities better places to live and to work. So today, I, I hope that this story can help start a conversation. It asks us to question the human values and issues supporting a vibrant community. And it frames a civic dialogue about a common history. That can bridge past and present divisions, promote revitalization. And create new ideas for shaping and reshaping communities in a better and more inclusive way. So that concludes my formal presentation. But finally, before I end for this evening, I just wanted to thank Michael Kober and Jeffrey Wilkerson with the Division of Planning for their interest in this history and for inviting me to speak today. And the same for each of the members of the planning board who have graciously granted me this audience. In addition, many thanks to all the family and friends, my college advisor, Alison Eisenberg, and others who generously supported this project. And of course, thank you, everyone, as audience members and members of the public for listening. So now I'm happy to open, I'm happy to provide one more time for Q and A, if that's permissible.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. I really enjoyed it myself. And I think, unfortunately, there's a lot of parallels to the struggles that we still continue to have in the city. Like when we think about our challenges with housing, access to parks, funding of education, the things that these three examples were showcasing just persist today. And I think it's instructive to think back to those examples. One thing that stood out to me at the end of your remarks is that you said, you know, urban renewal ended 24 years later. The problem is that we never actually addressed the impacts of that urban renewal, right? Like, the program, the federal program, ended, but we never actually invested in addressing what the challenges that urban renewal created. And I think that's why we find ourselves today where we are, unfortunately. So thank you for the presentation. Do other board members have questions, comments? Anybody from the public wish to ask a question?
Hi, Jordan. It's Sherelle Snyder. I just want to say, that was a remarkable presentation. I enjoyed listening to it very much. And it sounds like we counsel is making, was making bad decisions then, and they're still making it now. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you for participating in the meeting. Anyone else like to speak, make a question, a comment?
Very well presented. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you.
I guess one question, Jordan, before you go. If you were the planning board and you were processing this presentation, what action would you take?
Oh, gosh. Well, I guess, as a direct follow-up to what I was saying, I think having a conversation, just initiating a conversation about this history is so important. And just to help educate current officials and members of the public about what happened is really key. And it's the first step to moving on to discussing constructive steps forward. But like I said, unlike perhaps other places, the city of Trenton, it's small enough of an area that whatever happened at the center of the city, it affected everybody. It didn't just affect one particular group. I mean, yes, there were specific neighborhoods that were targeted and that were demolished, but everybody felt the repercussions of that. So there's really an opportunity there to engage all kinds of people in a conversation. And that could, it's really hard. There's the, of course, there's the famous saying that Lyndon Johnson and his mentor Sam Rayburn would say, which is, "Anyone can kick down a barn, but it takes a master carpenter to build one." And so the damages that urban renewal created, both in the physical environment and in the civic, you know, life of the Trenton, greater Trenton area, will take a long time to heal. But having that conversation is really a great starting point.
And I'm hoping that the city staff will plan to post the recording of this the start of a conversation on the Trenton250 website. And then maybe we can think about other ways that we could facilitate or encourage an additional dialogue. Because I think this is only, this is a really good look back, but maybe we need to also think about the now and how we move forward in addressing these historical wrongs. So, Michael and Jeffrey, I'm assuming that you will post this to the Trenton250 site once it's available?
Yeah, we could do that.
Great. I see a hand from Cassidy Boulon.
Hi, thank you. I'm Cassidy Boulon. I work for DVRPC, but this is, I'm just in a public role here. No official comment. But, you know, speaking of the conversation, have you shared any of this or had direct dialogue with any of the state agencies about this report? And as, you know, as Dan was saying, especially in the context of what happens with Route 29 now? What are their current thinkings about things like that? Seems like sharing them, sharing this with them and having them have some reflection would be useful.
Definitely, absolutely.
Maybe we can talk offline about making some connections to folks at the DOT. Or I know that I saw Joanne Povia was on the chat, so maybe we can think about how to get this into their hands as well. I see a hand from Eldronon Ward, and then we'll go to Ingrid Reid after that.
You touched on the very subject that I wanted to speak about. As we speak, we're working with state officials to try to get to reuse the Health Department building. Perhaps there's some private interest in it, and we're trying to meet with these folks to see if we can develop that area. And while we're talking to them, they're tearing it down. They're ignoring us all over again. And the same thing is true with the bridge over to Assam Pink Creek on Broad Street. We've been talking to the DOT. We want to try to expose part of the bridge as part of its historic value. We're talking to DOT about moving some of the service lines to a way that we can do that. It's like talking to a brick wall. These bureaucrats feel that they're above us. That they don't, they're not public servants. They feel that they're in a position to dictate to us what we want or what's best for us. It's very upsetting, it's very frustrating. And I think that the only remedy for these kind of things is, is the political realm. We have to make it very hot for politicians who don't, who allow these bureaucrats not to respond. We have to make it very difficult for them and to bring these people to heal, to make them realize that they should be functioning, particularly in Trenton, where the state has such large influence. They should take into account what the people's wishes are, rather than try to dictate what they think is good for us. And so, thanks. That's been, that's, Jordan, that's a very good presentation. I lived through that time. From 68 on, I was at Trent High, and I saw the destruction. I lived in South Trenton when all of these houses were being destroyed. Moved to North Trenton. As a result, now reside there now. So, you know, while you're living these things, you never think of it in the context that you're living through history. But to look at, listen to you put it together like this, very, very enlightening, and I guess sobering, that your life is now history. That one's life is now history. Wow. Okay, thanks very much.
Thanks, Eldronon.
Thanks.
I saw Ingrid Reid's hand.
Yes, I really want to say congratulations to Jordan and to the planning board for being interested in his research and seeing it so relevant to Trenton today. You started off your meeting with information about the Capital City Redevelopment Corporation Plan being updated. That entity is a state entity. Since its beginning in 1988, the recapture of the land that was taken for Route 29 has been an integral part of the plan for Trenton. It came very close to getting put to be implemented when President Obama announced the Tiger Program, but we just weren't shovel-ready. It is in the updated plan. And now, the country has adopted through the U.S. DOT a commitment to making the results that we see in Trenton whole for cities. Trenton's Route 29 is number 12 on the list of freeways that should be eliminated. And the new commissioner of DOT, Mayor Woodigood, has a real interest in this. We in Trenton and the region have to rally to make sure that Trenton gets involved in that program and has the visibility that we already planned for the renewal, the revitalization of the downtown by the elimination of 29 and the capture of open space and access to the river. So please, all stay connected. Let's get Jordan's message out more about the decisions that were made in the past that we're now suffering for, and we can make up for it. There's a real opportunity now, but we all need to get together and tell that story. Because the stronger the story is of how people were affected by what happened with the freeway, the better off we'll be if we want to reconnect with and make over the mistakes of the past. So I want to congratulate all of you and encourage all of you to stay in touch with this because the state, it's the state of New Jersey that we really have to follow through on this promise because it's in a plan that is in the state law that we have to have for the capital district. So thank you again, and thank you for letting me speak tonight. I was really pleased to be able to be part of this meeting.
Thank you, Ingrid, and thank you for all your work over many years to make that vision a reality. The only comment I would make to that is, unfortunately, I think we are still shovel-worthy. We are not shovel-ready. And so we need to make sure that Route 29 is on that project list and that we do have a rallying cry from the community to make it real. But unfortunately, I think we are still not shovel-ready. And we need to make it shovel-ready. I see Joanne Povia's hand.
Yes, hi, thanks, Dan. I just wanted to thank the planning board for having this presentation and also for alerting some of us that it was going to happen. And being able to listen has been great. I know Julie, I think Julie is on this too. I think she phoned in. And the presentation was excellent. My parents grew up in Trenton. Trenton was part of my life for a very long time. But some of the slides that you had are different takes on information that we have presented to the governor's office and others showing a, showing the need for an executive order that was put in place and trying to advocate for moving some of these projects forward. We're just one portion, but we are doing that. And again, the funding that looks like it's going to come from the feds, keep, you know, fingers crossed, they can't seem to come to an agreement. But reconnecting communities, we feel, and Julie's done some work on this, that Trenton should be well-positioned because compared to some of the other reconnecting of communities that have overpasses and a lot more infrastructure in the way, Trenton is a sort of more of a low-hanging fruit for being able to do the Boulevard project. So one of those particular overheads that you had, when, Dan, if you do get some information with attribution, I think that it would be helpful for us when we're trying to present, getting funding for this or asking our, you know, governor to advocate for funding for the Boulevard. That would be very helpful. And I know that there was a talk of April D. Simone's presentation. I saw that when it was in the city before. It's excellent. It's really worth going over to the conservatory. I'm going to go again to look at it, so thank you for that as well. So I just wanted to say that, Dan. Let's talk after.
Yeah, thank you, Joanne, for participating. Jordan, if you're acceptable to this or amenable to this, I think maybe we can connect offline and connect you directly with Joanne or others, maybe Julie, to continue the conversation and share those overheads. Because I agree, I think the governor's office needs to see this.
Absolutely.
Others have a question or a comment? One more call, last call. Well, thank you again. We'll take a motion to adjourn. Any board members wish to move?
So moved.
Thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you all. Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good one.